All right, so today is Wednesday, March 16th at 6:00 PM. And this, we're going to call the meeting to order. And first, I'd like to do a roll call for the Board of Finance members. So Mike, are you there?
I'm here.
Steve?
Yes, I'm here.
Dane?
I'm here.
Mary?
I'm here.
And I apologize, I don't have any other names.
Greg's here.
Perfect. Anybody else?
It's everybody.
All right, perfect. Okay. Okay, so the meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to your microphone unless you are speaking.
You've arrived at your destination.
Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outlet of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. And please note that the meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. So I think that gets us through all of the
Fantastic.
Compliance items.
Awesome. Great job.
Okay, so this is the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 23 budget as proposed by the Town Council, so I will open it to our board for any comments or questions.
Yeah, Ken, I think we were gonna let people who were there speak first. So is there anybody in the hall there who's looking to speak?
We only have a few members here. I don't think they're here to speak in the public hearing. They look like they're here to speak on Board of Ed. No.
All right.
And I don't see anyone else online other than Heidi and the Voices reporter, but you want to open it up to online?
Absolutely.
Heidi, you always have someone.
Please remember to unmute yourself, Friar.
All right, make one more call. Everybody want to speak? All right. Hearing none, let's move it on.
Okay, the next item is the consent calendar. I don't, are we move, are we going in order, Mike?
Yeah, I think we can go in order. I think we'll go quick and then we just want to get the Board of Ed up as soon as possible. So let's run through the first couple of things and then we'll see if we can move the Board of Ed to the top.
Okay, so we're looking for the approval of the meeting minutes and voting record for February 17th, 2022.
Steve Kirsch, I'll move to accept the meeting minutes and voting record for February 17th, 2022.
I'm Mary Hall, second to.
Okay, next up, we have first selectmen's communications.
You gotta make a vote on that one.
Oh.
No problem. Just ask if there's any discussion and otherwise we just call for a vote.
Okay, any discussion on the approval of the meeting minutes and voting record for February 17th, 2022? If hearing none, let's vote. Mike?
Aye.
Dean? Dane?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Steve?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And Rebecca, aye.
Beautiful.
Okay, now moving on to first selectmen's communications.
Thanks, Rebecca. The only thing I wanted to report on is to just draw your attention to the next item in the packet, which is the auditor's communication to this, to this board. In terms of their opinion, this is the first of two communications we'll receive from them. Essentially, this is a clean opinion. They've noted that nothing came to their attention to believe that there's any material inconsistencies or any misstatements of fact. They found that no matters that would require us to inform regarding methods, no unusual transactions, no significant accounting policies in controversial, where there's lack of authority of guidance or consensus, no significant difficulties in dealing with management regarding the audit, no disagreements with management across the audit. Yes, Mike. Commute yourself. Essentially, clean opinion. We are awaiting their recommendations regarding any improvements, as always, that they might suggest for improving controls. That's a standard thing that we get. But obviously, nothing that is of any materiality or significance that would rise to their not getting a clean opinion. That's all I got. Thank you.
I've got a question. This is Steve Kirsch for the first selectman, if I might. And maybe he'll discuss it later, but there's a motion under new business regarding a funds transfer for the Town Hall Campus Safety and Security Improvements Project. Can you discuss what that is?
I was gonna discuss that during, I was gonna introduce it when we hit that item.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public participation.
My tickets.
If you'd like to speak, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm hearing background noise. I don't, I don't know.
Mike, Mike, can you mute?
I think you did.
All right.
Is there anyone, is there anyone there for public participation? Not hearing any. Okay, Ken, is it safe to move on? I'm not hearing any.
Is there anybody online for public participation?
Not that we see, Steve. This is Mary.
Okay.
Okay, so the next item is our discussion of the three-year budget model. Ron, is there anything to?
No updates on that.
Okay. So we'll keep that, we'll keep that as an agenda item and move on for, for tonight's discussion. So is this where we want to add, move superintendent's communications up?
My thought is this would probably be a good spot to.
Your call. You can, you can take an item out of order at your discretion.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine doing that if, I wasn't privy to, you know, the request, but I'm happy to, to move that up right now if, if Joe Cops is there.
Thanks so much, Rebecca. I appreciate it. This is Joe Cops in here. Yeah, I appreciate, I have to, I have a double booked up to get to high school in a little bit. I'm joined with Jen Marcell, our Assistant Director of Student Support Services, and Darlene Fentor, our Director of Student Support Services. It's been a few months since, you know, you've heard from the special education teams. I wanted to ask Darlene to come. Usually what happens, we're just a little bit past the midway point of the year. I think a lot of times people think that special education is kind of set, you know, once the beginning of the year is started, you know, it's kind of set and we just kind of go from there. But it fluctuates throughout the year and a lot of our annual reviews actually happen around the midpoint part of the year when we're checking on progress of students. And as that happens, you know, changes are made in student programming. As I've been doing all along here, our goal is to keep this board apprised of how we're doing. But Darlene is gonna kind of just give a little overview of where we are. We're still trending well, but some things have changed. And I just wanted to, again, keep everyone up to date.
So as Joe said, I was last, I last spoke in October and that was when the budget was being created. The special education enrollment has increased. And I apologize that the people online don't have the chart. We did pass out the enrollment chart here. So the special education enrollment has increased from 503 students to 517 students since October. And when you look at the chart, since July 1st, 2021, 47 students moved into districts who are, were already receiving special education services. And I, as I've explained in the past, we have to accept those programs and honor those programs when they enroll in our district. Thirty-two students were withdrawn or dismissed from services and 25 students were made eligible for students. This leaves us with a 15% of our total population being identified as students with special needs. It was recently announced at the state level that K-12, the K-12 state average for special education enrollment is 16.3. Now, if you've heard me say K-12, we, our enrollment numbers are pre-K-12. So if we take out our preschool, which includes preschool in the equation, and look just at K-12, our percentage is 14.2. So we are well below the state average. One of the changes, one of the big changes this year is our excess cost. On March 1st, we updated the excess cost estimate. And due to the number of students that we brought back to districts and students who had program changes, the district is not expending as many funds on those students. So we think those students end up not qualifying for excess costs, which is a good thing. And so our excess cost reimbursement is now estimated at $400,000 in the budget. It's reflected as $507,000. So there's a $100,000 difference there. But we will have savings thus far in, it looks like in our transportation lines and in our tuition lines that will help offset those costs. Budget lines that we continue to be concerned about are outside agencies, independent evaluations, and tuition costs. At the time, there is, at this time, there is a negative $105,000 in the outside agency line, and that's just due to program changes. As Joe said, you know, during the second semester, many of our PPTs happened in the month of March, you know, from January to April, really. But most of them are in March. But we have program changes that, you know, we, we did not, that were not in place when we presented last year's budget. So then we have nationwide, we've talked about this before, that there's been a concern for mental health. And we've had many hospitalizations and the need for psychiatric evaluations, which will cost the district more than we budgeted through, through the Board of Ed side and through grants. I, we had also put last year some money in our IDEA grant for evaluations because we knew coming out of the pandemic that there were going to, there were going to be some of these issues. So that is a line that we do anticipate going over budget. And then historically, we have, we have some children who have placements that have not been firmed up yet. So we, we do have a couple of students, so that, that might affect our tuition lines. But right now in our tuition lines, we do have money in there for those, for those things. Overall, as Joe said, we are trending in the positive. Again, it's due to the students who we brought back to district, some COVID savings, and the creation of new programs to reduce the number of our replacements in districts. So I want to talk a little bit about our new programs. This school year, with the grant assistance from the state, we implemented a therapeutic program at Jackie Hollow School. It's staffed by a special education teacher and a behavioral tech. It provides the middle school students who experience difficulty with social issues. Through a flexible, small group approach, students are provided with interventions. And the goal is for them to be able to return to the classroom. So right now, they, they're being pulled out of the classroom for these services. But the goal is for them to be, go back into the general class, classroom and to avoid those out of district placements. The other program that we, we implemented this year is our community program for students ages 18 to 22. That has been very successful. However, we have a teacher, we only have a part-time teacher there right now. She's being shared with Massey. So in order to build on that program for the 22, 23 school year, we put a point five into the 22, 23 Board of Ed budget. And we literally, we do have a growing number of students that will attend that program next year. So we have already had, we have students that were out of district that will come back for that program next year. Based on the number of referrals from birth to three and some of the area, area preschool referrals, we have a growing number of students in preschool. I checked with the preschool today. You know, we, by the end of this year, we're going to be about 80 students in our preschool program. In order to make, use those minimum caseloads and provide the service hours that are on IEPs, which we're legally bound to do, we hired an additional preschool teacher and we increased the school psychologist position by point two through a special education grant that, and we implemented that in January. And then finally, through our ESTER grants, we added an additional point four school psychologist at Jackie Hollow. We hired four behavior techs. We hired a full-time teacher that is shared between Massey and STEM. Again, this is all to have manageable caseloads for our teachers. So I want to point out, my, my point is to that all these positions were added to the 2023 budget and are necessary, very necessary to support the end of the July's education plans for our students. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question on special ed here?
Sure.
Darlene, this is Steve Kirsch. The excess cost money that we're going to get, have we gotten it? Or when are we going to get it? When, when is the expectation?
We do have a payment due, right?
We have not received anything yet, Steve.
We usually get a payment in March and then a payment at the end of the school year.
Okay, so we do expect something normally this, this month. Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Joe and Darlene.
Thank you so much. Thanks for moving us around a little bit. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess while Joe's here, is there, are there any specific questions on the Board of Ed fund statement that you want to direct at Joe as opposed to me?
Can I ask a question, Mary Hall? So Joe, Mike, maybe this is to you. I thought we were going to discuss the Board of Education on March 31st. Does this replace that? Okay, that's what I, okay, thank you.
Basically, alls we're doing tonight was just getting an update on special ed, which is always helpful, and I really appreciate them giving us that. The 31st, we're gonna go through specific updates. Hopefully, we'll have some updated numbers from them. We'll go through if anything's changed and if they want to bring anything to our attention and if we have any questions, line items for them at that point. So yeah, we're planning on keeping that and that's when we'll kind of go deep dive into the Board of Ed budget.
This will be, this will be the budget for the upcoming year. Will it also include any potential in the next couple of weeks? Can somebody go unmuted? Will this also then, Joe, will this also, Joe, include?
But, ah, I don't think you're muted. Did you check?
Yeah, we're talking all about the communication that the Cleveland Browns may or may not attack with Baker Mayfield, and we were talking earlier about last. You know, I was told from somebody in Cleveland that they did reach out to Baker and just recently just let him know.
Yeah, we're listening to all kinds of great stuff. Heidi, are you able to mute people?
Hold on. There we go.
Thank you. So Joe, we'll go through more of, of questions and answers if, if we have them on the 31st. But will you also discuss with us if you foresee in the next couple of weeks? Because I think you said that you didn't see any overage or underage in the year. And you'll give us an update on that. Okay, thank you.
Talk about the current year?
Pardon me?
The current year.
Thank you.
The one piece of request is if anybody has any questions ahead of them, if they could send them to myself or Ron ahead of time, that'd be, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, usually, Joe, I, I collect them. So I would ask anybody over the next week if you come up with any questions to forward them to me and then I'll send them over in one group to Joe and get them done.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Have fun. Thanks, see you.
Okay, Mike, do you want me to move forward with new business?
That'd be great.
Okay, so next on the agenda is new business. And we have a motion to approve a transfer of $72,500 from the LoSIP fund to the Capital Reserve Fund for the Town Hall Campus Safety and Security Improvement Project. So Ken, I don't know if you wanted to provide some more information to us on that?
Yep, I'd be happy to. Thank you. So there was a, there was a bonding authorization that was done a couple of years ago for a collection of projects for Town Hall Safety and Security. There were priorities within that we had to address first, which were done. The biggest one being the, there was improvements at the library campus in the front of the library. And there was a, a larger effort, which was to address replacement of exterior doors at Town Hall and also add security cameras and key card access to Town Hall because we've had ongoing problems with, with the exterior doors here, which are extremely aged and kind of beyond their, their ability to be repaired. So the long story short is, again, this is another example of, you know, projects being put out with estimates that really aren't done prior to a design effort, which I am now advocating for. So between that and basically just time having elapsed and with changes in, in, in prices and such like that, there is not enough in the original bond authorization to complete that project. We do, however, have this additional funds available in LoSIP that would cover the, the delta, which is the $72,500. And by doing, by doing this, we can simply move the project forward and not lose, you know, all the, all the progress we've made at this point. Because we are, we're ready to, you know, we're, we're ready to move forward. The project was put out and bid, and this is a real number at this point.
Ken, it's a Mary. So the $72,500, that's a firm fixed number now?
We have a, no, so we have a, we have a total project cost right now, which is a, which is a firm number. There's a delta of $72,500, which would be needed in order to fund that project. I think, Ron, if there's a tiny bit of contingency built into there, not a lot.
That was my.
$1,000 maybe?
Right now, yeah, there's, it's about $2,000.
$2,000, yeah.
So then, Ron, in this, thank you, Ken. So in the $72,500, there's a $2,000 contingency in case it.
Yeah.
Correct.
Over. So if that does go over, that'll be moved back then?
If it doesn't.
If we don't use the $2,000.
If we don't use the $2,000, it'll probably remain in the Capital Reserve, but it'll get uncommitted. That can be used for another project.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca, this is Steve Kirsch. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Pursuant to this new business item 7A, I move to approve the transfer of $72,500 from the LoSIP fund to the Capital Reserve Fund to be used for the Town Hall Campus Safety and Security Improvements Project.
Do I have a second?
Hey, Kirk Navy, I'll second.
Okay, and for final vote, Steve?
Yay.
Mary?
Yay.
Greg?
Yay.
Dane?
Yay.
Mike? And Rebecca? Yay. Okay, the next item is the discussion of the unassigned fund balance policy. And I think there was a question on what that policy was the last time we spoke about it. So Ron, I don't know if you wanted to provide a summary of that for us over the phone?
So the, and I did, there was a question between meetings and I, I, you know, I can make, I think I dispersed that policy to everyone. Everyone should have received it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
You know, basically what the policy does is it sets a target of one and a half months as the target, which I believe is 12 and a half percent. I don't have, I actually don't have the policy in front of me.
It is 12 and a half.
With a range of one to two months.
Right.
So that's basically was, was the, was the gist. And the thought behind that at the time was, you know, we are in an area of the country that, you know, we're not, we're not reliant on income tax or, or sales tax for our local revenue. We're, you know, property tax is a lot more consistent and steady. So we don't need to keep a 20% fund balance like the recommendation is in some areas of the country. And I believe two months is actually the GFOA's recommendation. But we didn't, you know, at that time, we didn't feel that was necessary. And that's why the target was set where it was.
And I think, just a footnote, I think, you know, S&amp;P's giving us a triple A bond rating speaks to, you know, their perspective on this as well. They obviously feel our fund balance is extremely healthy.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to bring this up as well because we did this a few years back when not everybody was involved on this. But we originally had a policy of 5 to 10%. As we built the fund balance, we raised the policy to this one to two months, which is where it remains and where I'm still very comfortable. I don't know, Ron, if you have any update on what the number ended up at last year or where, what percentage we're at at this point. But I think we're on the high end.
We're on the high end. We are, Mike.
Right, but we'll, what we'll do is once we get to the mill rate calculations and some of the, when we're dealing with revenues, we'll take a look at exactly where we're at, where we're projected to be at at the end of this year. And that will influence our decision on, you know, whether we're gonna be comfortable using some fund balance for this year, whether we, how we wean off of that. And, you know, those are all the calculations. But I just wanted everybody who wasn't on the board beforehand to have this policy in hand, have a chance to digest it before we have that night's meeting.
So, so Mike, this is Steve Kirsch. As, as you point out, actually, four of us were not on the board at the time this was adopted. So A, thank you for, for putting this on the agenda. And Ron, thank you for sending this out. I had spoken as a, as a citizen prior to this being adopted in 2019. The concern, the only concern that I have, and it's not one that, it's just one that I want to surface tonight, not, not resolve, is that, that in Section A, where, where we set up the, these ranges, we don't really discuss what happens if we're in one range or above one range. We talk about what we want to use the fund for, but we have no prescription that says if we go above, let's say, the top two-month period, 16.67%, are we supposed to take action? Do we want to take action? And I think that's something, I believe the policy should be general enough to allow flexibility.
It was left out intentionally because to give the board the flexibility to make that decision on an individual basis. If we automate, if we automated it, then, you know, it would be much more cumbersome and could limit the ability of the Board of Finance, whoever that is at the time, to have that flexibility. I don't think anyone anticipated the rapid growth, so I think it's very healthy. We had some positive things that happened and we've had some, you know, opportunity to use it. But we, when we did do the policy, we intentionally left it. So it's a range, it's guidance, it's not a automatic trigger of anything. It is strictly. It is strictly for us to got, use as guidance and then, because honestly, when we did have the five to 10 and we went over it, Moody's specifically asked us at the time, when we were going through our review, what are you going to do about it? Um, are you going to spend it? Or are you going to modify the policy? And we made the decision to modify the policy to come back into compliance. So what I would say is if we are at the top range or at the, um, you know, over by any chance, the decision of the board would have to be, because I don't like to have a policy and not follow it. So we would either, in my opinion, amend the range or use some of that fund balance for other funding of something else to get it back in range. But again, that's a discussion that we'll have over the board. Once we have firm numbers on where we're at. But I think it's a great point that you bring up is there is no obligation for doing anything, but it's something we should talk about and make that determination because I do like to be within, if you have a policy, you should stay within, in my opinion.
And, and, and I, and I, and I agree with that last statement. And since there have, since the presentation from the first selectmen to the council, I believe is where the chart was, that showed we would be ticking slightly over. It is, it raised the question, okay, we have flexibility, we don't have a mandate. And, and I just want to make sure that this is something that we get a chance to revisit. Because I think the other issue that needs to be revisited is an actual overage versus a projected overage, right? The only actual overage we have in, in, in my view right now is the last audit, right? So we know what we ended June of 2021 with. Everything else is a projection, uh, good though it may be, no knock on Ron or Heidi or anyone else. And so that's the kind of issue when we get into how we actually cover, um, this upcoming proposed budget, I'd like to just spend some more time on.
So I think it's a great thing to keep on the agenda and important. Because it's one of the main things we should be focusing on is the fund balance, how it's used and what the level is that we're all comfortable with. So we will definitely add that to one of our meetings.
I think you already have it, uh, tentatively for your April seventh meeting to go over fund balance.
Correct. Yeah, I think that's usually when we run it is when we're kind of heading towards the end. So.
Yep.
Steve will remind us if we forget.
Thank you.
Mike, I have one other question and maybe it's to Ron. The target that was set at that, um, twelve and a half percent, you had, uh, you had said, Ron, that the, um, uh, the, there was a twenty percent, uh,
So.
For sales. Can I just finish?
Sure.
So why did we set it at twelve point five percent is my first question versus something higher and, or even something lower? And did we benchmark when we did the policy? Did we benchmark it against any other municipalities to see if the twelve point five was the, is the right ranger?
Yes, I mean, America's, I was the one leading it at the time. We basically had a policy that was five to 10. We reviewed most of the towns and spoke to the rating agencies. Um, and the range is fairly dramatic. Some towns like Sheldon have zero, some towns have twenty-five. Um, we felt one to two months of revenue, uh, or expenses, which was the eight, two point three to sixteen, six to seven was a logical thing to go one to two months. And then we just kind of shot in the middle. So basically, if you have a range, obviously you would think your target would be to be in the middle of your range, not at the high end or the low end. So that was the logic that was used. It was fed it out. It was long discussions over this. This was not something that was done in a quick meeting. Uh, we did a lot of work on this one. Um, and I think it served us well because of it.
Okay, thank you for that history.
I think your, your, your question regards to the, the higher rates in sales, I think what, what Ron was referencing is there are other states where local revenues are more driven by things that are much more susceptible to economic pressures like a sales tax, whereas with property taxes, it's pretty much, you know, at the end of the day, it's going to be there regardless of whether, you know, you get a strong, uh, consumer economy or not in any one given period of time.
Okay, thank you for that history.
That is what I was trying to say.
Got your back, Ron. All right.
All right, um, any other discussion on that or everyone's good? All right, the next item was general review of the fiscal year 23 budget as proposed by town council. And also, um, determining any department requests for budget workshops. I know we previously had, um, talked about that. Um, we just want to give another opportunity for any requests to come through from, from the board tonight.
So Rebecca, this is Steve Kirsch. Um, I'm, I'm going to just mention a couple of things, but we have this on our meeting for next week. And so I was assuming, um, that we would, having just gotten the budget, have a chance to go through it and then submit the request and have a discussion, um, on the agenda next week. So hopefully we'll, we'll do that. For me personally, I want to take a look in, in detail at the capital plan. I'm especially interested in talking about the out year items. And how things are there, why things are there. Um, the other thing, uh, I would like to have DPW, uh, come in because I would like to do a little bit deeper dive into roads. And I will put a question into, through Mike, into the first selectmen, but I'm also interested in some of the purchases that the park and rec, um, department is, is making for, uh, maintenance equipment, grounds, keeping equipment, um, based on some discussion that I had heard, um, at the town council strategic planning committee. So those are a couple of items that I know of, offhand, but.
And to your point, Steve, um, again, I haven't had a lot of time to go into a deep dive either. One of the things I was talking to, to the first selectmen about is we were possibly, I am going to be, uh, out of the country next week and not reachable, uh, because I'll be in Saudi Arabia and I'm not sure what it's going to be like. Exactly. I, yes, exactly. Um, and one of the things we were talking about was maybe pushing back next week's meeting and adding one in between, giving us more opportunity to go through. And then next week, we could send me a list of people we wanted to invite and invite them the following. So I wanted to throw that out there to see what everybody's thought was on that. I know Ken and I had spoken about it and I said I'd float it tonight. Because I feel like we've got a lot of time on the back end. Yeah.
Do you have the cal, I don't have the calendar.
I only have the meetings of the, I have the three thirty-one, the four seven and the four fourteen in front of me. Um, we could certainly add, you know, another meeting in between those Thursdays, you know, we, we could throw a Monday or Tuesday meeting in in any of those weeks. That would work for me if it would work for you guys and it might just keep us focused on a shorter window because I just think, you know, there's a chance that some of these numbers move in the next two weeks anyway. So that was my thoughts.
So there's a town council meeting on Monday, the twenty eighth. I don't know whether that would.
Yeah, I was looking at like, maybe we start on the thirty-first. Well, either the twenty ninth or we could go to the four or five.
Uh, Mike, this is Mary. Mike, this is Mary. Um, I have a personal, um, situation for the week of the fourth. April fourth, I'm going to also be out of state. Um, and I'm not sure what kind of, uh, uh, cell phone coverage I'm, uh.
Very understandable. So maybe, maybe the twenty ninth would, I mean, twenty ninth would work for me if the twenty ninth works for you, Mary and for Steve and everybody else.
Yeah, the twenty ninth works for me, but one of the other things, because this is my first, um, budget review, I was hoping that maybe we could do some discussion on the fund balance and the revenue accounts on four, seven in, in, in lieu of I might not be able to attend, probably will not be able to attend.
So, so, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we can move anything agenda wise from, from meeting to meeting. That, that might, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, obviously.
Without a doubt.
Okay, so I think that's fine.
And I'd be happy to accommodate for you, that's for you, Mary.
And I think on the other hand, picking dates, we really want to make sure that as many people can come.
Correct. That's why I'm throwing it out there now, right.
And so for me, the twenty ninth would work. My rationale would be, since we're pushing the twenty-fourth off, I'd rather keep it on the near side of the thirty-first rather than after.
I think that's logical.
So I, I'm, I, my calendar is fine and available for Tuesday evening, the twenty ninth.
I am too. I am too, Mike.
Rebecca, does that work?
That works for me. Yes.
Dane? Dane's the only one I didn't hear yet.
Yep. Sorry about that.
Beautiful. No problem. All right. So then, um, let's update the calendar. Ron, Ken, does that work for you?
Yeah, Tuesday, uh, the twenty ninth we're saying, right?
Yep.
What time?
Six.
Six works.
Unless someone has an issue.
You know, I'm thinking of softball games right now.
I know, that's what I'm, I'm checking. Why do you think I was delaying, Ron? I know. And they're starting to crank the music up. So I got about three more minutes because it's getting loud in here. I mean, I'm actually in a maintenance closet, believe it or not.
Oh, my gosh.
Because they're cranking music on the floor.
Mike, I'll go quick then. Uh, this is Mary again. On the twenty ninth, we'll, uh, discuss some of the revenue and the capital also then?
Um, I'd be happy to put, I mean, capital's a big discussion. I would love to, in my opinion, I'd love to hit roads because I think it's a long, important discussion. I would love to hit capital on the twenty ninth and I would love to knock those two big things out early. And then if we need more information or if we need more discussion, we can bump it to another meeting as well. Does that sound good to you guys?
Fine.
Yes.
That's fine. Yeah.
And Steve, just so you understand, I had a conversation again with Ken. One of the things we were also talking about on roads, just to give it some thought is we'll probably do next year for an updated measurement and I would like to see a three year plan.
Yeah, we are, uh, that is, that is in the, in the.
To not just talk about a one year plan. I'd love to talk about the three year plan that we could agree with.
Yes. So, so Mike, you're, you're, yes, I'm, I'm in sync with you. Um, three year plan, definitely. We're supposed to have a study at the end of this construct, this, this construction season, in other words, halfway into this new fiscal year. The end of this year would be four years from the last study, which was done in November, December of eighteen. And, and yes, if, uh, because I've gone back and looked at the, the, uh, report from the twenty eighteen study and report from the twenty fourteen study. And yes, I think we should be doing a three year outlook. And when we get into the capital, uh, and/or the roads, because they overlap, obviously.
Right.
We'll talk about, I'll bring a number of those things and I'll, I'll try to get that out to you beforehand.
Perfect. All right.
So then we're going to keep the twenty ninth and the thirty first, two meetings that week and cancel the twenty fourth.
Yeah, thirty first is board of up.
Mm-hmm. Three twenty-nine, you want to do, uh,
Capital and roads?
You're going to do, no, revenue and roads, right?
Revenue, roads and capital?
Revenue, roads, yeah, revenue, roads, capital.
I don't think, I think Mike wanted to do capital yet. It's because that is a longer.
I mean, we can touch on some capital. I mean, we can see how much we get done on revenue and roads. I mean, I don't mind, you know.
I thought, I thought I heard you say capital. I thought, I'm.
I did. I think I did.
I thought you said no, but that's okay. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I don't mind hitting it. I mean, again, we can see how tired we get.
Sounds good.
All right, guys, I am going to jump because the music's getting loud and we're going to warm up. So I'm going to go see this. So you guys take it from here. I really appreciate you being accommodating and, uh, go prep.
Have a good evening.
Um, I just want to acknowledge on the wall, Jason Maher has his hand raised. I don't know if he has any.
I don't know.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jason.
For whoever's taking over his chair, would you entertain a statement from a council member on the council review of the budget?
Uh, I will, Jason. This is Rebecca O'Donnell.
Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, very quick, thank you, guys. I tried to log on early enough for public participation, but must have missed, just missed it. All I, uh, when we passed the budget, I made this statement on the record on council. I just also wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, one of the things we discussed in our joint meeting was the, uh, with the capital reviewing everything that was coming off. And because of the fact that we haven't done a lot of bonding these past couple of years, the appetite for maybe increased bonding in this year, depending on what those numbers were rolling off. We didn't have a full analysis from the board of finance before we passed the budget, um, from the town council side. So I would just like to say from my perspective, uh, one of the things that I'd like to be looked at is whether that appetite has grown and I, I as a councilman at least, would have no issue with if the board of finance finds it prudent, um, to increase the amount of bonding, bonding and move some of the later capital budgets into this year's capital budget. With, with you guys doing so. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as I felt we didn't have enough information when we passed the budget to make that decision on our part. And I, I would love for that review to, uh, go through the board of finance if it could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Everybody have a great evening.
Thanks, Eric. You too, Jason.
Okay, so, um, next on our agenda is the review of our fiscal year twenty-two financial reports, um, the year-to-date general fund budget report.
Hey Rebecca?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, would you just indulge me for one minute?
Sure.
I just wanted, um, I just wanted to ask Steve, um, you referenced parks and rec and I wasn't sure if you were looking, it sounded to me like you weren't necessarily looking for the whole, you know, for a whole department workshop, but maybe had some very specific questions. Do you want me to try and get you those answers, uh, for, for next meeting or I'm just trying to be efficient about it, that's all.
You, you are correct. It's not the whole budget. There are a couple of purchases, um, for the field. And I wanted some additional information and, um, I will send you an email, um, through Mike, uh, with my questions.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Great. Thank you, Rebecca.
Sure. Okay, Ron, did you want to give the update on the budget report?
Yeah, I mean, there's not, I mean, we're tracking well. I, I don't want to get into specifics unless anyone has any specific questions. Steve?
No, I don't, I don't. No, I, I, I do, I do not have.
Now, we're, we're, you know.
Good.
Yeah, on the expenditure side, we're tracking well and on the, on the revenue side, we're tracking very.
Okay, the monthly report of the tax collector. I don't know if Deb is on the line?
Yes, I am. Um, I hope everyone received my report. Um, we are trending very well. We already hit budget, uh, really early in the year, which is great. And we are like at ninety-eight percent collection, auto collections, which I think is awesome. And we just, um, sent out the reminder notices last month. And I also sent out statements on real estate that were delinquent. So hopefully the numbers will be good. And next month, those who did not pay on, uh, motor vehicle and personal property will be, uh, sent to the collection agency and the twenty twenty uh, real estates will be leaned next month with the town clerks. So I think we're trending very well with everything.
Okay, great.
Deb, this is Steve Kirsch. Um, following up on my question from last month, are there any large payers that, you know, ha- haven't paid their taxes yet, uh, on the commercial side? I think the discussion at the last meeting was, you know, they wait till the very last minute in their.
They all paid.
Okay.
All the large, our, our large payers paid. Like I said, they wait till the last possible make, you know, day. So we basically, you know, they postmarked it for the first, which is timely, but we don't receive it till a couple of days later, which reflected in the February sweep report.
Perfect. Thank you. That's it for me.
Any other questions for Deb? All right, moving on to the treasurer's report. I don't know if Pat's on, but I also have his email.
No, Pat said, thought his email said he would not be there, submitted it in lieu of.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read that, his email to, to get it into our meeting tonight. Says, Dear Chairman Manjos, First Selectman Kellogg and Board of Finance members, the town has continued to roll over $23 million in 13 weeks. CDARs with Newtown Saving Bank, our latest reinvestment was at 0.25%, up from 0.21%. The state of Connecticut's STIF rate is now up to 0.19% as of March 15. The rate began to improve from 0.11% beginning on February 13th, '22. This is the rate at which our general balance bank funds earns interest. The Federal Reserve is set to meet this week, a long-awaited 0.25% increase is widely expected. This would be the first rate hike since late 2018. Going forward, Finance Director Bonavsky and I will monitor rate changes as we anticipate they will affect our decision-making with respect to investing in 13-week CDs. Respectfully, Patrick O'Hara, Treasurer.
That rate increase did happen today.
Yeah.
So, so this is Steve Kirsch. Ron, then what's, what's our next maturity of CDs that would, and when is it and how much is it?
So we just, we just finished rolling over, so probably two months out, they would mature, Steve. And we were rolling them over at, they were eight million dollar blocks.
Okay, so we have a couple of months now where, where we're going to be quiet only because we have, have nothing to reinvest.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then next is the Monroe Public Schools Fund Activity Statements. Ron, I don't know if there's more to add there with Joe not there. I'm not sure.
I, I could certainly field any questions. Right now, we're, we're tracking well. There, you know, as Darlene had mentioned earlier, overall and special ed, it is, we are, there, there is a surplus right now. We're, we're going to be monitoring that closely. That can, that can change quick.
Okay.
Outside of that, utilities are tracking fine. Transportation, athletic department transportation, we're, we're probably going to go over. We're looking at that. I don't, I don't see it being a huge deal. It's just they, we've had a higher bus company, All-Star, who handles our, our regular bus runs just could not handle the athletic runs after school. So that's cost the district a little bit, little bit more. But, you know, other, other than that, we're, we're, we're fine overall. Anyone have any specific questions?
No.
No. All right, that is everything on the agenda for tonight. So if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn, unless there's anything else before we, we get to that.
Steve Kirsch, motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
This is Mary Hall. I second.
All right, thank you, guys.